Monday, November 10th. Regional City Council meeting. First item on the agenda will be certification. Tonight, invitation will be given by Councilmember. The highest to do is cast a shout out at the church. It's one of that. Pastor, as Councilmember and pastor, as you give the invitation, I would ask that you also pray for the congratulations.
Yeah.
We thank the director.
That is correct. Lord, as we look on the histories to this great city, you can see, Lord, how you have blessed us in such awesome ways. Thank you, Lord, that even in our most difficult times, still you have always, above us three. Exactly what the citizens of this, uh, Reevesville, we pray to God, that you just continue to watch over us. We pray for the families that are suffering, those that are under difficult times, that we might share, love one another. We pray tonight that you will enter up to this City Council meeting. It's what always in our hearts and our minds, that we might do what is best for the city, Denver, for itself, and Denver for anything less, but to allow you to God, who keeps us. In fact, you again for your presence in this big time. Jesus may we pray. Amen.
So now I have the pleasure of the religions. We got a special guest here. Cardi Rivas. Could you step off? Ladies and please.
We just did a flag. United States of America, NCA Republic, where we just stand, one nation, under God, in the visible, the liberty and justice for all.
Next item will be proclamations and recognition. Tonight, we have recognition of Miss Cardi Rivas. National Champion for Age Seven through Age Softball, during the NL Division, Pitch Hit and Runnin Finals, as part of the 2025 World Series. Cardi is the daughter of Lieutenant Jerry, give us of the regional collection party. Cardi, if you could be out front, get your parents, we're also. The Regional City Council and the citizens of Reevesville would like to congratulate Cardi Reddy Rivas, daughter of RPD, Lieutenant Jerry Rivas and his wife, Hannah. Cardi was one of forty finalists for across the United States and Canada, selected from one thousand of participants to qualify for the NLW Pitch Hit Runnin Finals, part of the 2025 World Series in Toronto. Well, my dog is the one missing. As one of five finalists in the category of Age Seven through Age Softball, Cardi to top honors, named national champion in her division. Let's give her a big round. Our city is very proud of Cardi for achieving this sports milestone. This certificate of local 2025. I'm very proud of her and her reputation. There, if you would mind giving us some info on Cardi.
Yes, she tried out for this competition back in the summer time at the Michael High School. She won it there. She got put into like a regional database. She ended up being the top scorer in that division. So they ended up going to Washington DC to actually watch her compete in DC. She ended up finishing first there in DC for competition. Then she got put into the whole national database for all over United States and Canada. And the top five performers, of course, get to go and compete against each other. At the World Series, at the time, we ended up putting me California for the Dodgers, our first one would be in Toronto. And we ended up having to get our passports and go to Toronto, be, um, compete there, finish first place, and so to provide.
Uh, the initials of the war. This is recognition of the regional water treatment plant, personally, of the city, of the NCA area, wide application for the W O P. And I must say. Let's see. The Division of Water Resources has honored sixty-three water treatment crews for surpassing federal and state drinking water standards in 2024. The Division's Public Water Supply Section awarded the facilities the prestigious North Carolina Area Optimization Program, A W O P, which is part of a state effort to enhance the performance of assisted surface water treatment facilities. And I kind of say that this is the first time in regional there were women doing it. So I'm very, very proud. And I'm doing your proud too. That deserves a big round of applause. All of you who like yourselves are with the brothers.
Well, there's, uh, water plants in North Carolina are required to be a certain level of status, which is, it's like I've been breaking jokes yourself. There's a law here that's there to work with to exceed those standards. But they had to take an extra step, let's be satisfied to do what they did. Things like that, with the clean water for the younger set of people. And, uh, it's pretty difficult to attain a lot of all of our opportunities. It was always indicated by clients. One of this year, thirty-four. This, this father, child sister, don't you? We just all together, working with age, shit every now and then. We would, we like to do it out together. And hopefully we will continue to achieve that. So if you guys are students in my classroom, you can call your A plus plus. I think you deserve another big round of applause. You could be a lot of students.
I got a little bit excited about the proclamations and recognitions. We need to go back and then forward, do the adoption of the agenda. Council members, you've had the opportunity to take a look at the agenda. What's your pleasure? Motion. All right, we have motion and second in discussion. Although to pay the way you like. Next item on the agenda is approval of consent agenda. There are two items, is there any one? Other two that you'd like to have approved? All right, what's the pleasure, council? We have motion and second. Give it discussion. Although the favor is right there. Next, we have public hearing. Deceration of a zoning request. For a property located on West Street, City, Rockland County, long across the identification, seven nine nine four zero six two seven six five four nine. From split zoning residential twelve and residential agricultural twenty to residential twenty. Document number C twenty twenty-five X zero two. The after property ownership picture, property closure warrant, proof with it.
Thank you, dear. We have solar and vacuum and junk work. Um, as you said, Avery Artis, this is a chief of his own. We recently reconnected parcel, this is the one we burned in at ex-4 last month. The original name this time is coming after a Christmas party. So it is recently reconnected parcel located at thirty-one fourteen, thirty-one sixteen, and thirty-one twenty. Okay, it should extend to the existing address points on that parcel. From split zoning residential twelve and residential agricultural twenty to just residential agricultural twenty. The owner of the property, um, the owner of the property is Avery, property group. This parcel encompasses the area across the county. There are two containers that has been recently reconnected. I'll have that exact number for you, but approximately thirty-one acres. It is unveiled. City water services exist within the driveway of G Street Extension going into the south, and sewer services exist or are available within the driveway of G Street Extension to replace. And that's approximately just under fifty feet away. There are two screens on site, however, this property is not located with heat or water, with water trip, with water leak, or some free, so there are no these areas there. The floodplain insurance rate map indicates no floodplains on the side. The proposed zoning aligns with bill number two of the diesel and oil plan to develop the struggle of economy. This includes growing development and redevelopment, currently under the allow those areas and increasing both professional and educational opportunities. Just for background information, this will be used for Freedom Academy and school. If there's a question, you can hack to mobile. So we're practicing with Freedom Academy School. The property is located in the area of rural, surrounds the city curricula to the west, north east, and southeast. GMA four part of our class of preservation, we insist in development, including cattle land uses, while limiting partial industrial and high density residential though. It does not run into office, institutional, educational opportunities. In GMA four, there is a system road to work that keep on a growth as well as the existing infrastructure network sufficient to support this development. GMA four primarily consists of residential and institutional developments and other residential. Therefore, SCAP finds the proposed zoning request to be consistent with the 2022 reasonable land development plan, reasonable in the public interest based on the information provided in this report can be attached to statements of reasonability and consistency. Both SCAP and the planning board recommend the proposed zoning request. I want to ask for the question we have found.
Your question is not true. We'll open the public hearing at sixty-two. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for?
Good evening. Um, my name is John Walker, representing Freedom Academy. We're the owners of a street of property group. You guys have heard from the last couple of weeks here. Um, not here to talk about current matters. Uh, just here to talk about our school and the property there. You guys have heard about running the church campus that we are from located at in reference to bought this property on East Street Extension. Fortunately, there was a twenty-two acre parcel that we purchased, uh, which is seven RS twenty, which is perfectly suitable for a lot of the teachers at the school. Um, we can pick up an additional eight acres or seven from the west of the church, which is located next door. That is seven RS twelve. So this is a request really of the thing in order to combine the two parcels together. So that's why I'm asking you this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for? Is there anyone who would like to speak against? We'll close the public hearing at six seventeen. If they had a discussion, what's counsel? What is the title of that? Great, we have motion. And we have a second in discussion. Although the favor is right there. Next item on the agenda is public comment section. Terms of public comment experience should be allowed. Each member should be allowed, as of today, three minutes. Speak once at each meeting. Each speaker shall only have comments or file a quote after clearly stating the piece of her name and address. The topic must be simply related to the business of Reevesville or something that the city council can have some influence or control over. Walk should be addressed to the city council, and not to staff or the audience for reading. No remarks should be made on any matters pertaining to coinciding judicial hearings conducted by the council. Speakers will not be allowed to pay for public office or private business ventures with use language of a personal nature which insults or convenes any person or which went directly at a public official that is not related to his or her public duties. Actions by the council on topics raised under the public comment section should not be expected. Written comments may be accepted in lieu of all statements and may be delivered personally or mail to the city attorney office at two thirty west Goethe Street, Reevesville, North Carolina. Is there anyone who'd like to come before council to die this way? I'd say, yeah, what was it next?
One thing was I can, and I'm probably wrong, is that it was Martha Street, down in the border side, service and Martha Street. Now, I can hear your back, man, so representative. So they plan to.
My name is Ross Allen, at twenty-nine thirty-one, country. I'm here by the service citizen, a member of our community. We have experienced firsthand the consequences that our cities aging, scum of our system. Over the past few years, heavy rains have a few foot flooded our properties. What started as a non-holy has turned into a more serious flooding, causing damage to the buildings and surrounding length. Most recently, a section of the storm pipe collapsed, which may derive from the worsens in water strength toward our structures. The cost of repair damage has been significant, not only in money, but also the time of express. This isn't just our, our experience, I mean, highlights a larger issue across the city. Stormwater infrastructure is aging and often can handle the conditions with escalated. Every third year, whether it's a back pipe or an overwhelming rain affects more than one property. It impacts any proposed businesses and public safety. The city has stepped in and for paid for damages to the regional area foundation for forty-five thousand dollars plus other expenses and, and the living front page. Also for business near Hollywood. That shows the city does have responsibility when these systems fail, but instead of paying after the fact, we need to invest in prevention, regular inspections, timely repairs and upgrades, or if the system is clear limit is creating. I also want to ask aboard, who decides which repairs to do for our jobs? Residents need to understand the process, which areas are addressed first, what, what criteria is used. Trash payers need this, gives trust and ensures all neighbors, not just the most visible or ugly, guilty attention, but to make the problems good ones. Finally, I don't believe that adding new infrastructure by doing some properly maintain what you already had is responsible. Extending the system without fixing existing problems just creates more risks, more flooding, and a higher cost, I suggest. Proactive maintenance protects every book. It's cheaper than a budget to do payers and show the residents that the city is connected to the infrastructure we all rely with. I know budget decisions are tough, but this is about safety and fairness and accountability. You'll react now and you'll prepare huge, bigger problems. Thank you for your time. Thank you for listening. Uh, now, goodbye. Let's go after my, I will laugh too. I, I've given each one of you, uh, some pictures here, uh, and some of the damages. The first answer is.
We've got twenty seconds.
Okay. It is that.
You got your chance.
Okay. It's a three minute segment.
It's all good. It's simple.
So good.
Five, three, three minutes.
So for, for last time, I'm all set. But not that one country like, that system?
It's just. If you'd like to have another three minutes.
Okay, I'm asking, I'm asking. I need you to back some on this. So, so with my previous, I have pictures here. The, the area is of the big act property, um, building all the way from Market Square. Um, and as of all that water comes down off of Market Square, uh, goes over to, uh, where you see the three fourteen from there, uh, goes into some rain, so that, that property, three fourteen, it frequently floods from the water coming out of the market school, uh, from that problem market. Then it goes underground, crosses Wiggles Street, then, then goes under the the building that you see in the middle, at the very bottom, the side one twenty-three. Uh, and, and that's the building that you'll see at the second view, where you see the hole in the foundation. That, that's where the pile, under that building, has collapsed. Uh, so there's several, several pictures of that hole, uh, that was pinned by, just created the foundation and that wall that collapsed. Uh, the third picture is of a tension pump that is, um, located on that aerial map. Get this right, man, and then we'll put it up for you. That's what a tension pump is. And then you see how it burns it is, it's not contained. And then the last, uh, the, uh, Ernie Morris's property, which is on Wiggles Street. And, and there was a picture of his property that he supported. And then pictures of the new industry office that was there. Anybody have any questions about where we've looked at?
Are these pictures pretty, um? Do you?
Yeah.
These are recent.
Now, are you speaking about the, 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 if you're out of your sign? How long is this gonna be? Um, how long is? Fifty kilometers. I thought, I would say it was worsened after the film started. Any other questions? So I, oh, it's spoken of, he's root definition of practice, which he's done here tonight. And I thought these situations, they particularly, oh, general statutes use a case law that I believe that And I thought these situations, they particularly, oh, general statutes use a case law that I think that, 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 well, relevant to this scenario, as well as Ernie's, as well as a couple of other situations, um, and, uh, because of, uh, went and spoke with the city attorney, and asked him to do some research on this case laws, as well as, uh, what was our responsibility? So he get back, went from, and we started, he said that, no, for us to, for them to research that, it would take, well, vote of council, because to receive this contract. Now, this roughly, uh, scenario, um, in some of, uh, that's one of those, why question, in particular policies, uh, alternatives to the water. Uh, as later, is not really, is our responsibility. I'm not sure what if you, this stuff, uh, but I certainly, certainly, I know that. Last month, I know that, but the money is to be given, it's very found, everything, particularly because I feel that, they sound for that, do know it is our responsibility. It controls the water, and tonight, create profit damages, with, as short as water, with, and this is what I would certainly say, that we've created profit damages, that the difference. The system for overhairing, the system, system flooding, Mr. Bolson's property, uh, obviously, what, uh, we're at, we have, we're starting to think, and that's the, the responsibility of, of, etched much outside, catch us, and, and, and stuff. So I guess I got something to sit council, these are blood, uh, my, 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 city attorney, I asked this question, that one, uh, best of the wine.
Any laws, call me, you got, tell word, call me, that, and, about all of this, and, and, and Mr. Martin, Mr. Leonard, how you're setting up? And then, Mr. Martin said, you need waiting, give us a plan, so we like to see better, yeah. Now, question, I have to, I think a common selection, that one, you just, the body, I assume, I said, to, to help me, to know exactly what your experience, telling me that, or it's what issues,
And folks, like this specific Angela has.
Well, the project's done. Project's not approached.
I was gonna say, we've been on and on about these problems that we've had, correct?
No, no, the problem was the project was under construction. So they were keeping the granite, but then the running water damage. But you're trying to the head horse, which is all right. The head horse is sixty years old. We were, this, this project is to replace the dead horse. Which where everything comes in the slip. So it's going to bring more all day like this, layman chasing. And we're going over showing how to enhance the life, you know, skip it down the time. But this actual piece was during the destruction that he had two significant maintenance. He sent it out of the last year, uh, top of form. It's sort of the, the project that you're, um, so that's what it's just about.
Thank you.
That's both of these, great counsel, high speed.
Yeah, you know what, we're contract, uh, if you're just thinking about the block before I did, uh, the change orders.
There, see, the person, I had motion to eat change order. For charity, so it is beautiful. I tried the liberty. It was complete.
Yeah, okay. Now, sir. In discussion. Although there's anybody else ready? Next, I have consideration of change order with, um, should they come be constructions? For water treatment plant. Or plant generator project enclosed by, Mr. Coach.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, this was a little strange. Uh, somehow during the process of building this project out, as working with engineers on this project, uh, there was this communication that city regions taxes, sales taxes there. You'll find government's or doc sales taxes there. We actually pay sales tax, but we're able to have reimbursement. So at the end of the system, you're allowed to request reimbursement, but instead of being sales tax paid. And as you can imagine, a part of project, the sales tax is significant. So, uh, once we figured out that, uh, the sales tax is not going to be paying the people, uh, we had that corrected. But, uh, as the council said, if they include sales tax, then their contract management will be much better provided. So even though it's never going to be a true expense, so it probably will be reimbursed. She shows her own pay up patients. So their pay up patients, nothing enough to cover the cost. So they've estimated one hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred dollars of sales taxes in part of project. You know, it's about eighteen million dollars, uh, at the head up. So, uh, change orders figure out the points of consideration. Uh, sales tax, so we'll increase in contract. But again, in for days, that for sure is against it up for the future approach. But we do want the numbers to be, uh, correct, so that, uh, if you need a project, please do that. So, um, again, uh, it's going to be possible that it's not a fresh profit. So it's, it's actually change order number two. But it's going to be, but it's still the sales tax. Any questions with this? What is the question, please?
I'm not adjusting, so please change your heart to get comfortable because that I should correct the language.
Okay. Now, sir, in discussion. Although the vaporator right now. Next, I have a consideration of any significant fees scheduled to include down. I don't know if those are six, but then right, all in economic help with this.
Lead the mayor, Matt Andrew, ladies and gentlemen, some councils, but as you see you all. Uh, so the city is continuing to receive interest from several downtown businesses regarding use of potential dumpster downtown. After discussions at the council retreat last year, public works and economic development staff began to investigate the best options as to where to potentially place these said dumpsters. We concluded there are three possibilities. The first one being in a public parking lot across City Hall, which is parcel number one, five, four, eight, four, four. Uh, additionally, behind the stage of Market Square, which is, of course, quarter three South School Street. The other parking lot near corner of Lordhead Street in one little country in the drive, parcel number one, five, four, nine, seven, five. Public works has since wanted to pour the concrete, having some pension. Then a part of purchase order to move forward, the dumpster closed in Market Square. Uh, and parcel number one, five, four, nine, seven, five, which is the left hand corner of Lordhead Street through our little kitchen in the drive. The pavement margin has been approximately six yard dumpster that will be once leased by contracted service. The city has absorbed the cost of concrete, which was five thousand dollars, and also paid for the dumpster enclosures, which is eight thousand dollars. For a total of five to two thousand dollars. There may be prices to be caused to pay tracks or it's worth dumpster can weekly pickup, which is expected to be up to one hundred and fifty-five dollars a month per dumpster. The city continues to place the dumpsters and faces behind, uh, excuse me, based on business and property needs. Currently, the first dumpster that we put in place will be the parking lot across City Hall, give parcel number one, five, four, eight, four. To move forward with this process, we need to make an adjustment to the city's fee schedule to include pricing for each business property that we desire to dumpster. The revenue charging process scales per user for these dumpsters. Thus, users may be charged up to one hundred and fifty-five dollars a month. If, for example, three businesses decide to use the dumpster, the price will then be divided by three for fifteen-one dollars to sixty-seven cents each. If council does not move forward with this, we ask our board to begin to adjust the city's fee schedule to include a monthly charge of two hundred and fifty-five dollars per month per user for access to the installed downtown dumpsters.
Any questions with this plan?
I have one basis, and this will be for downtown businesses.
Yeah, man, for downtown businesses, that's it.
With no other business, thirteen. I just want to make a.
If you refer downtown businesses in the sense of, essentially, the way that the property ownership cannot have a touch for essentially on the plan.
I understand that, just wanted to make sure that who makes their list of downtown businesses.
Yes, ma'am, that is it. Um, enclosure, of course, would be locked, um, oil would give us lock. Essentially, not having closure, but essentially would also be locked. My thought is that these businesses that pay is within that access to a queue. Would also, again, discussing, putting the cameras up, have the opportunity to see the people. Uh, with the opinion of this, we may just play.
All right, thank you.
Because when.
The businesses that are going to use the dumpster, they will have to fill out forms, or no one is using them?
Yeah, essentially, they will fill out form, uh, through the situation, essentially, that's only through the.
So what do you do? And hopefully, I'll act, I think, a little, but if you get an example of a free business side pool that split up, what's going out?
There's only one, and then that you have to call.
They're not taking full chance.
Yes, sir. It also kind of gives incentive for them to talk to me, and they just, they just all students.
Right.
Any other questions? Most of the pleasure, counsel.
I'd like to ask you, so facing one hundred and fifty-five dollars per month per, per user? Or if the same could use the free power.
So, essentially, what I would refer to to say. Adjust these papers, include a monthly charge up to one hundred and fifty-five dollars per month, which would be essentially for a single user. Then if the other business starts talking, it's cases. So there's up to that.
So is the one fifty-five a second?
It's a one single.
So they would, if you're sorry, they would, they would take that out by forty?
That's what it is.
Okay, now, sir. In discussion. Although if they, if they're ready. It's what, uh? Next, I have a consideration of five or six amendments related to close out of rule of the project. If those are set, please, please, please. Yes, sir. Um, as you all know, the city may as well see the rule where you're right, they don't have a bogus office. They can kill any infrastructure individuals to the standard force park property, looking at all these in drive. Uh, the city's grant period is set to start at zero fifteen, twenty-two, five, and there's no option for extensions. And upon recommendation of citizens, usual project, really red now, the city should set the project for the contract of Triangle Break. And, uh, Triangle Break has agreed to two final amendments, on the slate, uh, before they did their final, uh, payment. In addition, there was some mitigation costs, uh, on the project of Triangle Break or, uh, to plate except they have not paid the, uh, engineering costs or the law of mitigation. Uh, the city has an invoice, strong, really dry, enough to protect one thousand dollars for that engineering submendation. And Triangle Break has agreed to pretty much receive. So this is two, the final things notes on the project. Um, one would give you is a, number one, a motion to accept the project, uh, to close out. Number two, a motion to approve the capital project ordinance related to close out, final motion number. And third one is a budget ordinance, which show the transfer of sewage and, uh, place seven thousand dollars that's needed to, uh, fight riots. It's also, so there's three motions for one, to close out or move. Any questions, sir, Mr. Coach? What is the pleasure from the first motion?
There, I have to make a motion to accept the project. How that divide closer, even trade type.
Now, sir. Question, sir. In discussion. Although you guys are ready to. Of the capital project ordinance. Was the third. And I believe the motions approved capital project ordinance and then close out and roll back. And then, second, discussion. I'll go to the third, please, right now. The final motion, why is it all the same?
You have to back the legal motion to only budget. One chance for some, one thing, we're very well done.
With the motion, I have a second. In discussion. Also, what do you have? Yeah, I think I'll ignore, uh, one of these companies, which is all about the big one. I would also like to make it known, I think this is the latest in the fiscal period, which had such a good, you know, with Walton Emperor. And it sounds like you would be in July, or in December. They go in November, I don't know that towards weird year. All right, this will have less. Consideration of holiday postpaid for city employees and related questions, I was just in that enclosure thing. So this is an answer, Chris, but. Now, it did take long to get a document into number two. But, uh, so for the last several years, we've, uh, don't get this kind of year to look at. Uh, so we used to have a pretty good idea of how the last fifteen years went. Um, um, every year in May, then, the budgets together, it always went out of the nation. It seems like a struggle to figure out where to go and try to find where to go. And yet, this time of year, we realized that proved the interest. Usually, it costs their savings in the budget, these local, like, different. Uh, for example, this year, you not have a city of near, on staff, and all of it. It has some engineering firms in contract. But just the savings and benefits, essentially, you got this issue all year. So usually, here, you say, man, the health community here did all right. Uh, I remember those savings were done in here in a lot different process. But what we knew is, we just did the years, so how do you go, what we added to fund dollars? And if you look at, you know, there's capital means, for looking at capital, if requested, not within the funding. And, uh, if we weren't able to fund the budget, this is what we would have, without the fund dollars, but we just have capital. So I'm glad to say we're able to cover the capital that's requested, uh, this presented during the budget. But we also have a little more savings than the fund dollars. So we'll talk about doing the performance, uh, actually, performance bonus throughout focus. Uh, the bonus is a thousand dollars per time employee. Uh, we build here a bonus of four hundred and forty, so you're able to process this. But if they work a thousand hours, uh, or if they have a thousand fifty-five minutes. And given the scale that on, under a thousand hours, every color takes ten percent off. So each way of work, you know, less than a hundred hours, it's still get thirty miles out of this, this, but. Uh, one reason that if you look at a thousand dollars per employee this year, uh, you all know in our evidence, it's brought to us. Back to brought to us. The Northside William is now is going to outcome the church physicality. And you're pretty sure those that are important is that we scramble and send all the equipment, insurance that so far has all been, is insured. Uh, one unfortunate side effect, I'm just switching insurance, is we went from a calendar year for a benefit to like fiscal year, so we're now July, June, just like harvest, we go before a benefit year. This day was a short, six-month year for the first half of twenty twenty five. It also means that our employees have to pay potentially for deductible, so it's seven hundred and fifty-five. So if you go, you know, particularly to the dark one, a lot of this activity, you reach deductible seven fifty. Uh, if in January, in June, the deductible started over in the flat. So you got potential reason, we got a certain time, uh, in accounting of the year. So a thousand dollars, once you take taxes out, each employee net costs is seven hundred and fifty dollars, which will shoot a seven ton if you pick, so we dropped out. Something we could do, recognize that wasn't a burden, I would expect it here. Some folks had their hands out of pocket, um, maybe twice a year, we come over them again. So, yeah, we can't do much more than seven fifty, because, um, you, you want to try to be a familiar employee, you can, uh, it's very, so that's the problem. So anyhow, uh, long story short, overseas is a thousand dollars per employee. The total cost must be added benefits, uh, to the, the paid is two hundred seventy-four thousand three hundred dollars. It's right around two hundred seventy-five thousand, uh, which is within both active and, uh, spoke angle to last. Right, I have three questions. Stay ahead of that. Any questions, Mr. Pleasure, please?
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the notice orders to minimize overhangs to appropriate fund dollars and reserve the paid employees for progress government for two thousand twenty five.
Sir.
Most of the second, in discussion. Although the third, we should. It's animal, dog. Just like. What was it, please? I think we have several candidates that have never healed. With a sign tag on the ABC board. It's like being the pled- pleasure of council, to just keep the party back by, with a valid yield, ABC. Your question, I'm certain. In discussion. Although the third, we should write that. For the Brother Reevesville Appearance Commission, Lisa Simpson. I also like, uh, what Lisa Simpson.
Hi, sir.
Second. In discussion, although the third, we should write. Reevesville Historic Commission, Jason Johnson.
I'd like to watch it, what Mr. Jason transenter this, with the vision.
Question. We said, motion in the second, in discussion. Although the federated, right now. Please, the Human Relations Commission. We have, uh, Cole Oswell. We have Eric, I think, Bowman. And we have, uh, Energy Ochi, that is our name, you know. She's still, she will be a way to see how she's doing.
Was our house, we should get that.
All the more there. We'd like to go.
One night, I'll still know.
Okay, we got motion. And sir, in discussion. Although the third, we should write. Reevesville Austin Rip, he has large graves. And we have Milton Presley. This is a turn.
They're going to keep, they're going to, they're going to. I wish I was selected. Honest grave, uh.
Milton, you are safe. All right, we have a motion in the second. And the second. In discussion, although the third, we should write. Next, I have a being manager for. Those are two.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So just a couple of announcements. The Starview's Christmas break will be Sunday, November twenty-third at four P M. in downtown Reevesville. Also, our downtown Christmas tree lighting ceremony will be Friday, December fifth, at six P M. at Market Square. And then the city holiday luncheon will be Thursday, December eleventh, from eleven-thirty to one-thirty at the Carriage House. I do have a couple of personnel announcements. Uh, the city of Reevesville received over twenty-five applications for our public works director. Administration selected six of that to come in for interviews with assistant city managers. Administration has narrowed the six candidates down to three candidates. The three candidates came back for second round interviews with management team on October sixth, October thirteenth, and October sixteenth. And I'm very excited to announce the promotion of our first ever internal candidate, Mr. Maurice Brothers. Maurice, please come forward. Maurice has been with the city of Reevesville since twenty twenty-three and currently serves as our wastewater treatment plant superintendent. He officially started his duties as local water director on November the third. Maurice, we're so proud of you and thank you for being part of Team Reevesville. It's very humbling to be able to promote from then, so would you like to say a word?
Yes. Um, both the council, I'm the mayor, so that, uh, I just want to say that, uh, I don't think that your, the city managers, the management team, um, who have been there since day of late, they actually process, um, but, uh, thank, uh, so, uh, Randy, to, personally, to honor, uh, to serve as average, to cast staff. Honored, honored, to serve as a publisher.
I would also like to personally thank, uh, former bar chief David Bracken and Lindsay Tottle, for their willingness to accept my phone call and return to the city of Reevesville, uh, and help fill the void in our public works department until we define public works director. Their leadership is to be commended, and they have been very gracious to extend that offer and work with myself and Mr. Brothers if we meet them in the future or anything. But just want to give a personal thank you to, to Chief David Bracken and Lindsay Tottle for stepping in when we really needed them. Also, during this transitional period, administration is handling the role of assistant public works director, which has been vacant since the job was created back in twenty twenty-four. Based on the needs of the public works department, administration has reclassified this position into a public works operation director. And I'm very pleased to announce the promotion of Mr. Josh Tomlin into this role. Mr. Tomlin was serving as the street superintendent, and he is now our public works operations director. And most of the water leaks, well, about all the water leaks that we unfortunately had within this last year, if it hadn't been for Josh Tomlin and his team, I don't know, we would have made it through, so it's very exciting to get to see him take this next leadership role. A couple other announcements. Uh, Ms. Claudia Moore was recently named the new city of Reevesville planner. Uh, Ms. Moore was promoted internally to assume this role that was previously held by Ms. Trupiclo. And Ms. Moore's been with the city of Reevesville since twenty twenty-four, serving as our customer service representative for community development. So please welcome Ms. Claudia Moore to her promotion as well. And then lastly, to fill a vacancy led by Ms. Claudia Moore's promotion, Ms. Michelle Webb is now the city's new customer service representative for community development. This web has many years of experience in customer service, and we're glad to welcome her to our team. And then finally, just a couple of managers' announcements. Uh, at the December city council meeting, it's normally reserved with swearing in of elected officials for the city of Reevesville. Therefore, traditionally, the city of Reevesville has limited amount of business that's conducted at this meeting. Talking with each city council member, the discussion of the city of Reevesville's clear cutting policy will be postponed until January. Curbing voter will go to planning for in December and back to council for a public hearing in January. And with that, Mayor Council, that concludes our report.
Okay. The road to council, when you're. You're approaching.
Yeah, I was saying, what, do what, actually, yes, me. Great oceans. You listen, it's going to be so. The park, this is going to be. Yours, you must be here. Even crucial, it's facility, it's huge, it's almost, just one, just one, just, uh, she knows the same.
Good.
I'll speak more, stop. That's good, Coach. Mayor, I have a court of kids, I look like, uh, talks like, uh, once, uh, that I, I listened to, and I had a lot of people which I knew about, also questions about the proof for Reevesville. Um, and there was misinformation that I witnessed myself and had put out there into the public. Uh, and one of them, and I think one of them said here during a public comments, uh, that the city is only growing three hundred acres since nineteen seventy. We all know that's not accurate. Um, in nineteen seventy, we had some department conflicts, we have some developments here. And then when you hear discussion about that, you have a lot of finger to what wants to blame the council here. Uh, or who the council is kind of like the, of the years, if you know how the census works. Um, and so I wanted to take this opportunity to say, take one in here. If you want to blame anyone, and I, and I would explain where I come from, if you want to blame anyone, uh, blame everyone, explain yourself, look in the mirror. Because where I'm born is these numbers come from census. And you have businesses that pull these numbers up. And I would ask everybody here, when's the last time you might have filled out census? Want to raise your hand? I haven't. I can't tell you the last time. So when you hear businesses not coming here, a lot of them, they look at those demographics. And if we're not filling out these, uh, census, we can get lower accurate or more our population on. We were hurt our own city, and one of them is, uh, for example, Chick-fil-A. We've talked about that, we've tried to get Chick-fil-A here, and there's some criteria these businesses have. One of them is the population needs to be twenty thousand or more. Well, we're showing fourteen thousand, that's a change. But if we're not sitting here and we don't get an accurate number, that would kill ourselves of attracting business here because they do. Uh, Darius will get mentioned several times. I can tell you all those things was here, but they would reach out to Darius to get them here. I can tell you, I know if they would here, if they would reach out to Darios to get them here, this was a quiet guy, I think. And one of the things for us to prove came to, look, the graphics need to work. So when you pull those numbers up, you see the population was stuck. Nobody's filling out census. So it's not we're trying to get information, we're trying to get businesses here. That's one of the things I look at, uh, considering, and employees here is trying to reach out to get business here. That's one of the things, what's your population? What's your traffic coming through here? And that's, and we got to have these conversations here, so if you want to blame anybody, let's blame ourselves, we're not giving an accurate number to census. Which is what a lot of businesses look at. And the other thing, and when I got this information, I couldn't get hit with it, I couldn't apparently sit around about it. And I said, let's pull up the, uh, water bills, let's pull up the residential water bills. Well, if you pull up, pull up the total amount of water bills we have, we'll have the residential, residential, right at about six thousand. So if you multiply that by two people per household, you're not even fourteen thousand, it's a change. So if you go to the next number, three, to cover the three, four kids in the house, now you're on fourteen thousand, you're eighteen thousand, it's a change. So that's, that's part of, when I talk to people, people come to me about it, that's what I try to explain to them. Because every day we're having people look, we have businesses looking, they look at what the population is and what the traffic is here in Reedsville. So I want to throw that out there, people are saying we haven't run three hundred people, uh, in fifty-five years, it's absurd. And we got the report here, we, we brought it, I think we looked at it, it was the only city, uh, that grew, uh, was back in two thousand, and now we're growing out, two thousand tens, one fifty, and rocking in camp. So when I keep hearing this, these, these numbers being spit out by people, you know it well as I do, if you've lived here in Reedsville all your life, or a good amount of years, there's been apartment conflicts pop up, there's developments here, roads had multiple paths along, walking here in nineteen seventy. So that's why I want to kind of take this time to the management to explain. We're trying to get businesses here. We're hurting our inbox, we're hurting citizens, we don't fill out census, but that's what a lot of us go to. But with water bills, if, if we have one, we can get more of an accurate number, which is true, you know as well as everybody, it's not too big to our eyes. There's, there's out this guy six feet. You can't count the effect of the, uh, uh, apartment complexes. You have some of this, oh, these, these six, six thousand residential water bills are, and I'm referring this to the meter, okay? Now, you have some apartment complexes in the city that operate off of one meter. So how many people are in that pod or darkness? So you could have twelve hundred people in one section apartment go extend one meter. So we go around to the apartments and see if we get the information as to how many, uh, people live in this, uh, apartment complex to get a better accurate number. But we have tried, I have spoken to the city manager to follow along to see what we can do about it to get it more accurate, and you know what you're covering. So it looks like you're gonna have to wait, um, you know, another five years for census to go around for third. And all I heard is, is everybody, including myself and everybody else here, fill it out, they commit truth, it's no sticky information. But if you want businesses here, you want us to grow, this is what businesses look at. So, you know, I wanted to add that part about it, and then while we're talking on water and the residential, I said, the point that came up concerning during this recent election that I was highly disappointed and upset about, um, that some information was going out and going out to folks during this election by phone calls and spreading misinformation that the city of Greensboro purchases a million dollars of water for Reedsville a day. Absolutely, absolutely untrue. I think I, when I crawled that information this summer and asked that, uh, I think it's going to lie in twenty years selling water at Greensboro, we're at twenty billion, uh, twenty million or something, in twenty years, it's, it's averaging about a million or less a year. But this information was going out telling people that we're getting a million dollars a day from Greensboro. Absolutely false. So I want to address that, of course. I don't know how many phone calls from maybe this information was going out, I know I got phone calls about it. I want to take this time to say that, right, that if you heard that, absolutely all untrue. You have.
That's one month days and a half.
Mayor and Council, I just have two things, I just, I want to thank you. Counsel. I just want to thank the city for finding out we did the gap festival. And I think this year was, uh, we exceeded our effect and they did a fantastic job. And thank the police department because there were no issues. So I'm proud of that, and the same thing with the trick of treating Reedsville, I saw more children this year than I've seen in five years. So I just want to thank everybody for the time. And we.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank the citizens of Reedsville. I did not get a chance to, uh, campaign this year like I normally do. I spent most of my October in the hospital, super hospitalized, so, but I'm back and I will promise you that I will serve the city the best of my ability. And I want to thank everyone, the churches, the individuals, the, the organizations for all the prayers, because it takes courage. Thank you very much.
I'll stick with us.
I'm really worried because you had to be able to begin with me to thank this special part of the village. I didn't do this, but I just wanted this time to let, um, our volunteers know that we're certain, but we appreciate the sacrifice that you made, the team made. And, uh, just make this whole nation, that place, all of it, respect. And I say to you this time, our best, and everybody possible. Well, and also, uh, I'm, I'm truly, uh, very. Certainly, Julie, we want to still, uh, uh, see, big guys, hey, that's great, still is this commission. Just had a hard time of it. I don't know, I don't know, technically, human relations commission, maybe. They all entered the first. I tend to the, uh, seven and, and the, 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 you bring it. There were really nice, and also this feedback on the, I'm not sure if we need the medicine, but I just received, um, nothing but just absolutely. I'm just out there, I'm here, but one time, he, uh, the face.
It's by the. I want to take this opportunity to thank all the citizens of Reedsville. So I'd like your hearts to receive that I've done, um, I guess, and have the job that's there. And thank you for your support. Blessing that you're giving me, certainly, in the next forty years. I also like to say that, uh, God, nothing but positive for my, for that festival. Friend always tell me that I get to do a little bit more practice between down and the next festival. Pumpkin roll. And I, I may do that, uh, just for her. I missed, uh, appointment and council, uh, Harrison, uh, took care of it for me, the, uh, N W A C B banquet. On that same day, at the same time, we had planned a surprise birthday party for my wife. And for the first time in forty-five years that we've been married, and the five years prior to, we managed to pull a move over. She had no idea that the party was for her. It did me, I mean, it was, it was so exciting for me, it just, I, I thought I was more excited than she could. But, uh, I do appreciate you all. And I thank you for the opportunity, sir. We'll be moving to the first floor. Don't get, I'm sorry, I'm looking right at you tonight. I was excited about this one.
Good evening, everybody, thank you. This is my pleasure, it was a pleasure, and, um, so I'd like to piggyback on several things that have happened. First of all, I'd like to say that the city chamber were heavily involved in my campaign in twenty twenty, to nobody was successful. And I would like to suggest to the city managers that on our, by recently, as we've been about, we've been forward, they are already in the works for twenty thirty, and what that looks like, and I think that we should probably go over and address how we can work together, um, to make that happen, that they, that they run share now. I know, and it's, it was a reminder, we have quite the campaign, the social media, interviews and all the things, and we talked a lot about how people are hurting Reedsville if they didn't fill out census. We pushed it, that coffee is on, but it's, it's got to get, it's going to get bigger and more infiltrated into the actual community, so. Um, I'm absolutely delighted, I'm looking to the chamber, the chamber can move to help to pass, and try to. Another moment I'd like to say, the Fab Fest was beyond amazing, I think you should all look to the right, very end, your city manager, who sat across from me and said, darling, our restaurant, it's got, it's got changed. And I want a monkey burger, and I want, and she kept on this list of I want, and I said, yes, I'm on, and she said, and we have a commitment to work on that, and I said, I believe you. And her team pulled off her vision and it absolutely was just a rainbow. Uh, I mean, I, everywhere I go, I mean, just random people saying their name, I cannot believe how wonderful the Fab Fest was. So congratulations, I know you were pleased, I know your vision came, and then Montana and his whole group, Montana goal, I mean, bull, it's amazing, so. Um, congrats on that, we're proud to be a part of it, and anything we can do to make that, um, better in the future. I'm actually going to jump down a little bit, um, I want to piggyback on some of the doubts that was. Since you guys are talking about healthcare and all the things, we are really excited, I've been watching the Florida bill, I've been to the first that passed the bill. We have been working on it, I'm going to shake her hand, and she remembers, we've been working on this for ten years. We are now, by, the bill has to say North Carolina, our chamber will work with the North Carolina chamber, and anybody who's in a small business that has two, up to fifty employees will be able to offer to their employees, if they are a member of the N C Chamber, or the local chamber, who's participating, a blue cross, blue shield, amazing plan. They have to have two fifty employees and they only have to have twenty-five percent of their employees to participate, to be able to, which is huge, because in the past, it's been seventy-five percent. So we have been working on this really hard, it's something we've thought more of, we are. It is called Carolina Health Awards, we are rolling out the interest this week, it starts January first. So we are rolling through this, I think this is going to be huge, if a lot of interest is already. Um, if you care about it, or if you have questions, I'm happy to talk about that, or answer it, we are just super pumped about it. It's going to be really good for our businesses and employees, they're going to, um, you know, to attract employees, to retain employees, nonprofits, everybody's eligible. So it's going to be a really big deal and we're really excited about it, so I want to make sure that you guys are aware. We did have some upcoming events really quickly, Shop Small Saturday, it is the season, Shop Small season is starting November first. Um, this year's theme is, um, every purchase has a purpose, and we're trying to encourage everybody to shop local and explain why that matters, but on that day, Shop Small Saturday, Saturday, November twenty-ninth, we will start at nine ten P M. And we will be at the chamber, I'm Jared, so we're going to have a DJ, we're going to have snow, get what we're snowing in downtown. Um, and we are going to gather everybody, the first hundred people, we have partnered with the R and C, and we are really excited to be able to offer under stockings, unique stockings to the first hundred people through the door, and then we're going to be giving away after the season, a giant stocking. So really excited for people to enter that, they have to spend twenty-five dollars locally, so every receipt that they were having spent in businesses in both downtown and any chamber member who shops downtown, they will be, um, so anybody in downtown, because we partner with the R and C and any chamber member, so. Very excited about that, it's going to be a great day. Um, also, on Tuesday, Christmas, we will have Santa's workshop, very excited to partner with the city on that, we will be offering the luggage to Santa. We will have those, um, magically returned and answered to children, um, before Christmas. Um, and then we also will have a craft station and bin bag, very excited for ourself, and mental order to continue to participate for us to hold those, so. We have a thousand bags, if you have a trip as we field, and then a single candy after that, so, um, we love to turn around and do it again in Christmas, so we're like, hey, and then we have two brushes, can you be nice? So, and then, um, very good, sweet, our holiday special, but also Starred and Tyler and Marty. So her last day is Friday, December nineteenth, so we're going around to her old way party from eleven to two, so please stop by, floating, we will have food and drinks. Um, and we are just rolling on through the holidays, so three ribbon fittings, really quickly. The Reapers is this Saturday, November fifteenth, it is for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six season. Um, very excited to do that for them, and try to support them, so that is at noon on Saturday. About the latest new location, if you have not been inside of it, you are missing out on a quad tree, it's much larger, they are able to accommodate many more people. That is on Tuesday, the eighteenth afternoon, and then we are very excited to welcome O'Farrell's Boutique, which is now in the previous Warner, um, Warner's name shop, and we will have her, uh, her ribbon editing at noon. Brand new business, like those that you have on social media and stuff, welcome out, y'all come out and support her, lovely young girl, and her mother, the mother is, um, Marlene Harrison, some of you may know. Harrison's carrying home things, that's who O'Farrell's boutique is connected to, so, very excited for them. And then on the back, you have a list of our marketing members, which we have multiple since the last time I saw you, and I would not go hose out to this lot. And then the next Coffee and Connections, there's that one, which is the funeral on Thursday, December the fourth, at nine eighty, so. Thank you all so much, have a good evening, any questions?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh. I'm mad at you, and I didn't just turn around and say.
I may have a bad problem.
Sorry.
Then we'll be moving to the first floor, afternoon, close session, this is, this is, five four three, hash two eight, eleven eight six. And I'd like to thank you all for being here today. Just hope the city will be good. We will not be returning, so have a good time.